Good evening and welcome to the March 11th Maplewood City Council meeting. We have a very short agenda, actually, tonight, I think. We do have a public hearing. And I generally start off, following in Mayor Slawick's footsteps, with just a little bit of news from Maplewood. And I thought that I would just highlight for everyone, the Maplewood Living is out. And I've actually gotten calls about this. I think people saw it and saw spring. And so they were calling and talking to me and telling me what a good newsletter it was. And just a couple of highlights. Spring is coming. I told our council this last week and they didn't believe me. It is coming. We now have daylight savings time. And so we've got some indicators here. Our Maplewood spring cleanup is coming up on Saturday, May 11th. And for our new council members, that is a really fun opportunity. The council gets to put on, you know, those reflective vests. And then we get to talk to cars as they come in and help staff. I think we really don't really help them much. You talked to... Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. That was good.
It's particularly fun when it's raining. Pitchforks never happens.
Right. That really isn't very fun. But it's not going to be raining this time, at least, that's what I've heard. And we also have an announcement in here about our tree program. You are going to be able to order trees at a discounted rate. So spring really is coming. And I just want to be an encouragement about that. And we have our adult softball leagues on the back. So spring will be here, ladies and gentlemen. And one other point I just wanted to point out is that we have a new app that is going to be available. Well, you can download it onto your phone. It's called the Pulse Point App. And it is for those people that are trained in CPR. And if you have the app on your phone and there's someone nearby that needs, you know, CPR, then your phone will alert you. And it will alert you as to where the closest AED is. And it will also alert you on, in terms of how to perform CPR. I plan on putting that onto my phone, and I hope many people will do that as well. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk Sint, would you please do our roll call?
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Councilmember Juniman.
Here.
Councilmember Neblet.
Here.
Mayor Abrams.
Here. Thank you. Do we have a motion for our council workshop minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Excuse me, the approval of the agenda.
Oh, excuse me. I jumped ahead. I'm sorry.
Too enthusiastic is all I have to say.
It's good. Have a little energy here. Okay, let's roll this back for a moment. How about an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
One, two, three. Second.
Okay. Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juniman. Any further discussion? Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a brief council presentation on road drainage.
Road drainage. I can't wait to hear that one. Okay, Councilmembers Juniman.
Thank you. A reference to Pulse Point. And one last time, I hope, trash and recycling cart placement.
All right. And I would like to add the Regional Council of Mayors and rental licensing meeting and a police ride-along that I did, and also the rush line.
Good heavens.
Yeah, I got a few of them this evening. Any other additions? Okay, all those in favor of our approval of our agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. Motion passes. Now, let's move to the city council workshop minutes. Councilmember Neblet, do you want to move that again?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Neblet, seconded by Councilmember Smith, the February 25th, 2019 city council workshop minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
I move the February 25th, 2019 city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juniman, the February 25th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Passes. Okay, appointments and presentations. Council... City manager. Coleman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the city council. Tonight, I'm just going to run through the upcoming meeting agenda items that are scheduled for our workshops primarily, and also where we're at with some of the other work tasks that have been assigned to staff. So on March 25th, our next meeting in two weeks, we will hear from the Public Safety Department on their strategic plan, which they've been working on for a while. And I think you're really going to be interested in hearing about what they're doing in the police department and fire departments. We will also have a continuation of commissioner interviews for a couple of our boards and commissions. At the council meeting, we will have an update from our municipal attorney, Ron Beatty. On April 8th, we will have the Census 2020 presentation, and we'll also hear from...
Time out. Vacral music. Take five.
Also, Dave Bruback family.
Big five.
All right. We'll try to snap out of that. Wind her back a minute. Go to the April 8th workshop. We are going to be hearing about Census 2020 and how important it is for our communities to be involved in the count. It's very important for us to get a good count of our residents for... One of the main things is for our representation in Congress. Also, we'll hear from Superintendent Osorio from District 622 about some of the plans they're working on for their facilities in our district. On April 18th, we will have a city council senior management team retreat. And on April 22nd, we will have an update on the rental licensing program, a report from our police advisory commission, and we'll also talk a little bit about pet licenses. With regard to some of the things that we're working on, Tobacco 21, we will be... We're kind of waiting to see if the state does anything with this. There is some legislation proposed at the state level. And it doesn't really make sense for us to jump into that if they do that. And I don't know where that's at. I haven't followed it that closely. But I will keep you posted if I do hear about... If it's looking any... At all positive at the legislature. We talked about the Minnetoka Tree Program. That's complete. The mayor talked about how we're going to have the tree sale in May. And there's a lot of information that'll be coming out shortly on our webpage on how to order trees. We're working on a pedestrian safety plan, sign removal on vacant buildings. There will be a report on that shortly. That has been going through the design review board and planning commission process. We will give you follow-up reports in June on the new on-street parking ordinance and the new excess calls for service ordinance. And pet licenses is scheduled. And I would just add that I didn't put this on the list, but last time we talked about looking at the interview process for our board and commission appointments. And so I had indicated that I would like to get feedbacks from the board and commission... Or the commissions themselves. And I will be meeting with each and every one of them within the next six to eight weeks. And I do... I try to make their meetings at least once a year, but this year I'll be going out to do a presentation similar to what I will be doing tonight with Mr. Beatty on how to conduct business as a commissioner, as a council. So I will get back to you on their feedback on that. Upcoming community events, the rental licensing community meeting has happened. That happened on March 5th. I think Mayor Abrams is going to talk about maybe some ideas about how to enhance that engagement process. Then on the city tree sale, the tree sale opens on March 18th, that's next Monday, and closes in early May. And we'll have a pickup day on May 20th. And there's going to be a lot of information. I think it was in the Maplewood Living this month, and also on our webpage if you're interested in that. And now, Mayor, is the time for council members to bring forward any concerns or issues that they would like staff to work on, on your behalf.
I think I've brought up plenty lately.
You know, I'll bring up one point now. I was going to wait and talk about it when I do my presentation, but I was... I attended the rental licensing community meeting. Councilmember Smith was there as well. And I've been thinking about how we can get even more engagement. And the two engagements that we've had already with our community has been talking with landlords. And I think it would be a really good idea to see if we could do some engagement with tenants. And I realize that that might be a little bit more challenging. I know that there are certain tenants groups that we might be able to reach out to, and since they no doubt represent a number of different tenants, that we might be able to have some type of a meeting with them and talk about what their interests are so that we can, I think, educate ourselves better and look at what we might do in that One of my concerns is how do we tap into individual tenants who might be fearful about reporting their landlord if they do have some kind of unsafe problems at their rental unit? And so, you know, maybe staff can talk about how do we reach out to individual tenants? I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into, actually, the council presentations about what I'm doing to try to kind of look at our community and what we might do in this area so that we really meet the needs of our community. But just if we can come up with some idea on how do we approach tenants so that their interests... Because there are stakeholders in this as well. And that way, we can understand what their interests are. So if you could add that to our council comments, some type of engagement with tenants. With that, Councilmember Smith, you wanted to talk about road drainage. Let's hear.
Well, as much as it might not feel that way, spring is upon us. And I've heard from some residents and also see myself, we're starting to get a fair amount of standing water on some of our roads in town. And I myself spent about two and a half hours yesterday chipping ice and opening up the drains on my street. And I think if everybody can pitch in a little bit to try to get some of those drains opened up that are underneath the big snowbanks right now, it's going to help that drain out. I get sometimes that's probably not feasible. And, you know, if there is a big problem with standing water, certainly you can contact us and let us know. But I think if neighbors can all pitch in a little bit and try to get those cleared out, make it easier for our public works team to clear out the ones that really need to have professional help in doing so. So just a little plea for everyone to kind of be neighborly and help out with that because, you know, if that water is freezing and thawing on the roads, it certainly is rough on those roads. So it's best if we can get that water drained.
Thank you for that. And citizens, if you're having problems with standing water, or it's a problem where it's just the drain is just too difficult for you to handle, then please contact Mr. Love, our Public Works Director, and he will get a crew out to assist you. So thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Juniman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You brought up the existence of the Pulse Point App. And I just thought people would make... Knowing that there's been a discussion for quite some time going on at the county level and at our dispatch policy meetings, and actually, one of our chiefs, Mr. Mike Mandor, had a lot to do with this coming to be. And so we've gotten a lot of respect from other places that Mike Mandor belongs to Maplewood. So hats off to Mike. And then, one last time, I hope this is the last time, I hope I'm not bringing a curse of weather upon us. But with what happened last week, you want... Once more time, have another layer on your snow piles, I presume. So one last time, when you put out your trash and recycling cans this week, please don't put them in the street. Your trash man or recycling man will find them at the apron of your driveway. Living in the street could mean you might not have one. I'm sure they'd be out plowing one more time. Or someone driving by early in the morning might take out your trash cart. So if you put them in the apron of your driveway, and hopefully, within a month, they'll be able to see them. Thanks.
Okay. Couple of points I wanted to bring up. I attended the Regional Council of Mayors meeting, and the guest speaker was former Mayor Nora Slawick, now the Chair of the Metropolitan Council. And she came to talk about transportation and to talk about the governor's budget. And the governor is currently proposing 10 new BRT lines in 10 years. And the goal for transportation is that with these additional bus routes, that it would connect one-half million people to a 30-minute commute, and it would drastically alleviate some of the congestion and the traffic problems that we are having in our metropolitan area. So that was really encouraging, and it was great to see Nora at that Regional Council of Mayors. In terms of the rental licensing meeting, I think I already meant... Well, I've just mentioned to Melinda, Ms. Coleman, about adding the tenants piece to this. I think it would be important to hear what our tenants have to say. One thing I did was that I went out on a police ride-along because I wanted to hear about rental licensing from our police officers. And then I'm also going to be doing a ride-along from the fire department perspective to understand, really, what are the problems? You know, when you envision adding a new city ordinance like this, and we're considering it, I certainly want to make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences. And so I really want to see this perspective from a variety of different viewpoints. We had two meetings with landlords, anyone in our city that was... Owns, you know, non-homesteaded property. We held those over at the Fire Hall. I'd like to suggest that we have a meeting with tenants and tenant groups from the... From their perspective. But counsel, I just wanted to share with you that it was very interesting because I attended the roll call with the officers, and I asked them their opinions on some of the issues that they see with rental property. And I have to say that, you know, we have a lot of really good rental property in Maplewood. But like many cities, we also have some problem properties. And really, that's, I think, the goal of this whole idea about studying this rental licensure possibility. And so it was rather eye-opening to do a ride-along and to see some of the properties. And I have to say that my impressions were that, you know, we do have... My concern is that we have families and we have children living in some of these rental properties, and I want to make sure that they're safe. And so it was a really good experience to do it. And I'm looking forward to riding along with the fire department as well. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is the rush line. I also attended a meeting. I'm on the Policy Advisory Commission now for the rush line. And it was a very interesting discussion because White Bear Lake is going through figuring out where their stops are going to be in White Bear. And I have to say that I was very pleased with the PAC in terms of being open to new suggestions. White Bear originally had the stop happening over at the bank building, basically kind of just off downtown in White Bear. And now they've kind of moved that. I don't know that they're quite settled in yet. There's still some discussions about it. But I have to say that I was very pleased with my first PAC meeting on the willingness of staff and the police... Or, I'm sorry, the PAC, the Policy Advisory Commission, and their willingness to look at different alternatives to make sure that the rush line really is, you know, optimally placed and that it is very well thought out. So there's my update. An awful lot of meetings, folks, but I think very good things happening for our city. Okay. I have some. So with that, let's see. We have... The next item on our agenda is the Heritage Preservation Commission 2018 Annual Report. City mana... Well, Ginny Gainer, I think, is... Ms. Gainer is going to take that.
Thank you. And I'm going to turn it right over to the Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission, Pete Boulay. Pete, if you want to take the mic.
Pete Boulay, 1100 East County Road C.
Welcome to the commi... To the council.
Happy to be here and talk a little bit about what happened in 2018. Probably one of the biggest things we did was work on the cemetery, Ramsey County Port Farm Cemetery, working with the county, try to make that a Maplewood heritage landmark. And, you know, working on signage for other properties, too. I don't know if I... Yeah, I probably... Everybody's got a copy of this, right? All right. So... And the Gladstone Shops was great. We had wonderful weather. This is why we do these things in the summer and not in the winter, right? It can be a little difficult to get there. So we had a good time there, working on the Wakefield Project, one of our unique parks, named after Sarah Wakefield. And of course, the 2017 Heritage Award to Steve Carlson. And of course, we got the 28 one tonight. So it's kind of fun to have that tied together. I'm not going to go through every single thing, but that's just some of the highlights. Plenty of work to do. We have lots of great ideas for 2019. Lots more history to be had, working with Maplewood Area Historical Society with projects as well. If anybody's got any questions, I can be happy to answer them, too.
Any questions, council members? Councilmember Juniman.
Not a question, just a comment. I know you people are really enthused, and there are certain people in the population who are, but I don't think they realize that a city that is now 62 years old is full of history, actually. Some of it pretty old. And I was very amazed myself to see that in Maplewood, there are 136 homes over 100 years old.
Yes. That's something we revisit every five years. I think we chose five years.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a lot of homes that are... Have history with them.
Yes. Yes. It was interesting to see that big a number. I don't know that most suburbs either know that or pay attention to it.
Yeah.
So thank you for that fact.
Yeah, so it's a... I mean, every home has a story. 100 years, long time, lots of families, lots of history. So we tried to document what we could. I think we got pictures of all of them, pretty sure. So I'll have to keep adding more pictures as they get older. And then another 30 years, we'll have a lot of homes, maybe, that are about that age, so.
Thank you. One of the things that I really appreciated this year was the videos.
Okay, yes.
I really enjoyed the Gladstone Shops and the Wakefield Remembered. Really very well put together and a lot of good information that I think... We have links on our website that citizens can watch. So thank you for all of the work that you've done. It really is appreciated. I know you worked with our communication staff, and those videos, I think, are just excellent, so.
The communication staff gets the full credit for that. They're the visionaries. We have the information in the interviews, but they made it look very professional. It was like almost like a little mini movie.
It did.
So anybody out there, if you haven't seen them yet, they're on the Maple... The city, like a YouTube channel, right? So, yeah, check them out. And we hope to do more. We're excited to do more, so.
Good. Thank you very much. Counsel, we need a motion to approve the 2018 Heritage Preservation Commission.
So moved.
Moved by Juniman.
Second.
Seconded by Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And we move on to a resolution of appreciation for Frank Gilbertson for his service on the Heritage Preservation Commission. Ms. Gainer.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Frank Gilbertson served on the Heritage Preservation Commission for five years and four months. And he was a lot of our... As a commissioner, you just have to attend commission meetings and really read your packet and do that kind of research. But several of our commissioners go well beyond that. Frank, in particular, was instrumental in writing 10 of the 60 stories from 60 Stories of Maplewood history for us. He did a couple really wonderful, well-thought-out presentations for the history commission. He worked on the Ramsey County Cemetery, helping us to prepare the nomination to designate that. And he worked... He really helped us gather the info... A lot of the information on Wakefield Park for the Wakefield video. So you have before you tonight a resolution of appreciation for Mr. Gilbertson.
Thank you. Councilmember Neblet, would you please read the resolution, since you are the liaison for the Heritage Preservation Commission?
Mayor Abramson, it would be my pleasure. Whereas Frank Gilbertson has been a member of the Maplewood Heritage Preservation Commission for five years and four months, serving from September 9th, 2013, to January 10th, 2019... Excuse me, September 9th, 2013, to January 10th, 2019. Mr. Gilbertson has served faithfully in this capacity. And whereas the Heritage Preservation Commission and city council have appreciated his experience, insights, and good judgment, and whereas Mr. Gilbertson has freely given of his time and energy without compensation for the betterment of the city of Maplewood, and whereas Mr. Gilbertson has shown dedication to his duties and has consistently contributed his leadership and efforts for the benefit of the city. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved for and on behalf of the city of Maplewood, Minnesota, and its citizens, that Frank Gilbertson is hereby extended our gratitude and appreciation for his dedicated service. Passed by the Maplewood City Council on March 11th, 2019, signed by Mayor Abrams and attested to by City Clerk Sint.
Thank you. Andrea Sint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move approval of the appreciation... Resolution of appreciation for Frank Gilbertson.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Moved by Juniman, seconded by Smith, the motion to approve the resolution of appreciation for Frank Gilbertson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Mr. Gilbertson, would you like to come up?
Oh, I'm sorry, he was not able to be here tonight.
Okay.
We will send that to him.
We will send that to him. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, resolution awarding the 2018 Heritage Award to Ronald Cockrell. Ms. Gainer, do you want to start that out, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. The Maplewood Heritage Award is an annual award recognizing an individual who has positively influenced our city's past and/or strengthened the preservation of Maplewood history. On February 5th of this year, the Heritage Preservation Commission recommended Ronald Cockrell as a recipient of this year's award. Mr. Cockrell has been here... Been around for a long time. He's done amazing things for the city. We know him as an active... An activist in our community. And what's real special for me about this particular... About awarding it to Ron is it's not only for our cultural history, it's also for our natural history. And I think he's really understood what preservation means by connecting the two. Ron, in particular, was really active in the Big Three citizens' efforts to preserve the community's heritage. And those were the open space in the early 90s, Save the Barn in the later 90s, and about 10 years or many years ongoing, and finally, eight years ago, coming to fruition, Saving Fish Creek. So we have quite a bit of information on Mr. Cockrell in the resolution. I would love somebody to read that, and I will repeat that.
Thank you. I'd be happy to read it. Whereas Ronald Cockrell has volunteered countless hours helping preserve and advocate for Maplewood historic and natural resources as an active participant in the Big Three citizens' efforts to preserve the community's heritage. Save our open spaces, save the barn, save Fish Creek. And whereas Ronald Cockrell worked with others to protect open space, which included the successful $5 million open space referendum to acquire natural areas. And whereas Ronald Cockrell worked with others to save the barn, and as an active member of Maplewood Area Historical Society, has participated in many initiatives, including getting the barn ready for programming, developing landscape plans, and helping bring a national preservation conference to the Bruin Troop Heritage Farm. And whereas Ronald Cockrell led the citizens' effort to acquire the Fish Creek open space to protect the natural wonder and significant archaeology of the site. And whereas Ronald Cockrell served as a chairperson for five years on Maplewood's Heritage Preservation Commission, and during this time, the HPC developed new programs and set the groundwork for the city to gain certified local government status. And just a couple more whereas's you've been busy around. more whereases you've been busy around. Whereas Ronald Cockrell helped ensure the protection of historic and natural resources through active participation on the Parks and Recreation Commission, Open Space Task Force, Greenway Task Force, 2020 Comprehensive Plan Task Force, and as a character member of the nonprofit Friends of Maplewood Nature, and whereas Ronald Cockrell has freely given his wisdom, time, energy, and leadership for the benefit of the city of Maplewood. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved for and on behalf of the city of Maplewood, Minnesota, and its citizens, that Ronald Cockrell is hereby presented the Maplewood Heritage Award. The Maplewood Heritage Award recognizes an individual who has significantly contributed to preservation of Maplewood history or historic sites through research, preservation, or education and outreach. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the resolution awarding the 2018 Heritage Award to Ronald Cockrell.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson, approval of the resolution awarding the 2018 Heritage Award to Ronald Cockrell. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, discussion? Councilmember Juneman.
I think we should point out that you know he's been doing this a long time when he worked on the 2020 Comprehensive Plan. And we just completed the 2040.
I did think about that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Mr. Cockrell, do you want to come up? And we'll take a picture, and then you'll have a moment to...do you want to address the council?
Sure. Thank you, Ron Cockrell. Doing some reflection and realizing that I'm probably in my fourth decade approaching this microphone with questions, concerns, and causes, and I really appreciate that opportunity and working with councils, past and present, and staff, past and present, on a plethora of issues and concerns and projects. It was earlier this evening, the council and their presentations were focusing on the weather and how winter is like, but I don't know that...I have never met Mr. Funk, Assistant Manager, but I do believe he is a golden Mustang. So, did you spend time in Marshall, Minnesota? Is that information correct? My wife Jean and I are graduates of that university, and when you want to know winters, winters on the prairies are pretty impressive, so... Having said that note, I do have a few...now, it's a short meeting. I have a few things to reflect upon if I could read a prepared statement, so... Good evening. I am pleased and honored to be here tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for the recognition of my many years of volunteering to preserve and present the history and stories about the places and people of the city of Maplewood. I am honored to be recognized and to have my name placed on the Maplewood Heritage Award among such prominent and dedicated citizens. Through my volunteering to preserve Maplewood's history and to tell her story, I have shared experiences with equally dedicated citizens in creating the identity and forge the bonds of kinship that exemplifies a vibrant community. I want to thank you to...as Steve Carlson started last year, and I think it's a good idea, he recognized previous recipients of this award, and I want to just go ahead and list...read the list of recipients. George Washbach, Shar Wazlik, Ann Fosberg, Bob Jensen, Carolyn Peterson, Bill and Raydell Bruentrop, Joe Fox, Al Galbraith, Lois Beam, and Steve Carlson. I'd like to thank all of them for blazing the trail ahead. It was lots of work to establish the Historical Society, get the Preservation Commission up and running, and they've done a lot of work, and I just want to thank them, and I feel honored to be presented this award and to have my name placed alongside of them. Such citizens' pride in preserving our shared experiences can be contagious, thus affecting others and prompting the need to organize. Recognizing this opportunity, local citizens, organizations like the Sons and Daughters of Highwood, the Maplewood Area Historical Society, and the city-sanctioned Maplewood Historical Preservation Commission are all created to act on preservation concerns. We should all be familiar with the citizen-volunteer organizations Maplewood Area Historical Society, as all the names recognized on the Heritage Award were once members of this organization, and as the late, great Shar Wazlik referred to, a citizens' activist organization. Thank you, Maplewood Area Historical Society members, for all that you do in Maplewood and all that you plan and continuing to do. And there is, the city staff-supported and city council-sanctioned All Volunteer Maplewood Heritage Preservation Commission, the keeper of the Heritage Award. The commission is tasked with carrying out the city's stated preservation goals. I would like to thank longtime society and commission member and current chairperson, Pete Boulay, for his nomination...for nominating me for tonight's award. I am truly grateful, Pete. Thank you. If not for the rules governing the award that states current commission members are not eligible for nomination for this award, certainly Pete Boulay's name would be on this award long before my consideration. Thank you. The third citizen group mentioned is the Sons and Daughters of Highwood. Highwood is the community identified by the city as the South Leg. Tonight, for the first time, a citizen of that community will have their name appear on the Heritage Award. Highwood's lineage is not derived from the railroad, but rather the riverway and its high woods. Together with our neighbors to the north, supported the city's preservation efforts to open spaces citywide and for Fish Creek to protect those high woods. The hopes and desires of our citizens' preservation groups were only recognized and achieved when the city council, by decree, challenged city staff, citizens, to fulfill the mandates. Individuals, organizations, local, city, county, state, and national can all take pride in the preservations accomplished by Maplewood, because in Maplewood, together we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, let's go take a picture. Let's go take a picture. Line up and take turns, so...
Thank you.
One more. I had a lot more. I just couldn't...I'm too nervous tonight.
We should probably thank Ron's wife Jean for putting up with him being gone so much. Or was she...maybe she was happy? Okay.
And just a point of note, it's like, this is one of the first times, I think, that you've come over to City Hall and you have not ridden your bike.
Couldn't fit Jean on the back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, Ms. Gainer, we have you one more time for the Arbor Day proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. National Arbor Day is the last Friday of April, but each state and community varies the date to coincide with planting times. In Minnesota, typically March, the month of May, is typically Arbor Month. Minnesota communities observing Arbor Day usually schedule celebrations in late April or early May. The city of Maplewood, our naturalists at the Nature Center, have scheduled an Arbor Day celebration for May 4th this year, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and there's a flyer in your packet on our tremendous Arbor Day celebration that we're planning. It's a drop-in style at the Nature Center. And so, we're asking the council tonight to proclaim May 4th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Maplewood.
Thank you, Ms. Gainer. Ms. Juneman, Councilmember Juneman, would you read the resolution, please?
Yes, thank you. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. That always makes me smile, trees coming into recognition in Nebraska. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees help improve human health by reducing air pollution and reducing exposure to the sun's UV rays, and improving mental health by reducing stress and increasing concentration. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate temperatures, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, and for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a source of joy and beauty, now, therefore, be it resolved that May 4th, 2019, is hereby designated Arbor Day in the city of Maplewood. Further, all citizens are encouraged to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And P.S., look up our tree sale on the website. Passed by the Maplewood City Council on March 11, 2019.
Do you have a motion approving the Arbor Day proclamation?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. Approval of the 2019 Arbor Day proclamation. Although...is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes for the proclamation of Arbor Day. Thank you. Moving on to appointments and presentations, commission appointments, City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Earlier this evening at the workshop, the council interviewed three candidates for an opening on the Planning Commission, and this was due to resignation. The vacant term will run through December 31st, 2020. There is a motion for the council to approve the attached resolution to appoint the candidate to the commission or board as indicated below. So, after the interviews were conducted, the council ranked the three candidates, and the appointee will be Mr. Liu Yang. So, I would need a motion on the resolution, Mayor and council, and with that, staff will notify Mr. Yang tomorrow. I don't think he's here that...when the meetings begin, and to confirm that he is the designee.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the resolution appointing Mr. Liu Yang to the Planning Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, or motion by Juneman, seconded by Smith, appointing Mr. Liu Yang to the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd like to thank the two other candidates who submitted their interest for our Planning Commission. I know that we have other commission vacancies available, and I would strongly encourage you to please submit your names for, you know, serving on those commissions as well. You know, it was a really tough call tonight. It's not easy, but please, join us in participating in our local government, and we'd love to have you apply for one of the other commissions. So, thank you, everyone. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. Are we going to get all of the other commissions done next time? Okay.
I think except for PAC.
Okay. Do we have that one? Do we have a time frame for that?
We have some applicants, but I wanted to talk to you guys about that.
Okay.
And so, the answer is, the other commission appointments will be the next council meeting.
For two weeks.
In two weeks.
Except for PAC.
Except for PAC, okay. And next on our agenda, we have a presentation tonight by City Manager Coleman and City Attorney Ron Beatty concerning conducting city business in public meetings presentation. This is a really excellent presentation. I know the council members who've been on here for a little while, we've been through this before. This really is to your advantage, the new council members, and it also is going to be the presentation that is going to be made to commission members over the next several months. So, City Manager Coleman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As Mayor Abrams indicated, Mr. Beatty and I are going to kind of tag-team on this, and we are going to go down to the podium. So, if you'll excuse me for a minute, we'll start from over there.
Yeah.
I could be on the right. It's not normally where I stand on things, but...
Okay, so, thank you. As I said, I got my sidekick here tonight because I thought, as a maximizer, a person who likes to maximize our resources, I thought, why not? He's got a lot of knowledge and experience with this. So, if we could have the overhead...I forgot that. So, tonight, we're going to talk about public official conduct and help you...guide you through six areas of interest that will help you, we believe, in being a better council member. We're going to talk about conflict of interest, meetings, kinds of meetings, the Data Practices Act, which is one that we really work with almost every day here at the city, public hearings, difficult constituents, and social media. How's that for a lineup? We're going to start with conflict of interest. Oops, wrong button. You cannot have a direct conflict or indirect personal or financial interest in any manner upon which you have the authority to make a decision. So, any contract made in violation of the conflict of interest is void, and there'll be a little more detail coming up on that. What does conflict really mean? What does that really mean? The council cannot enter into a contract where one member has a conflict of interest unless the council member has no ownership in the company, the council member is not an officer or a director, the council member does not receive commissions or bonuses, and the council member will not supervise the contract. And here, we're going to let Ron talk a little bit about the difference between a conflict of interest and a non-contractual action, and how that may disqualify you from voting. So, Ron, do you want to step in here?
Sure. As the city manager said, their conflict of interest really comes in two flavors. One is contractual, which means a contract, a sale, or a lease, and that's a strict prohibition. If you are authorized to make the decision, meaning that you're sitting on the council, you cannot do so. There are a list of statutory exceptions, but that's a very strict rule. The other context in which conflict comes up is considered non-contractual. That generally comes up in land use or licensing issues. That's an easier thing to deal with. It's still important, but recusal is usually the approach in that case.
So, our next item has to do with...did we talk about that? Let's see that.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm going the wrong way. The gift law, thank you. So, a few years back, probably 10 years ago now, we had a change, and it's actually state law, that local officials cannot accept gifts. And so, it says from interested persons, but I think it really means everybody or anybody, except family members, correct?
I've been here a long time, and I haven't ever had anybody try to shower a gift on me, so I think it's either me or the law.
Well, you never know. The gift law and local officials are appointed officers. That's a kind of a broad definition. It actually relates even to employees. So, we follow the same guidelines. A gift equals money, personal property, real property, a service, a loan, forgiveness of debt. And an interested person is anyone living or doing business in the city who is or could be impacted by the council decision. So, anything to add with that, Mr. Beatty?
No, I think, as the manager said, the definition of interested person is very broad, and the definition of local official is broad, particularly when...the issue is, are you going to be in a position to make a decision? I think the safe thing is to consider that it covers almost, if not all, city employees.
We do try to give you examples of how you can work with the gift law when you're out in the community, because many of you are out in the community a lot. So, some examples would be if you're attending a neighborhood barbecue or national night out, for example, bring a dish to share would be one way to get around that. Invitation to attend a charity luncheon for free. Make a pre- Make a presentation or answer questions, or pay for the meal. And generally, any of the meetings that you are attending, we, the city, covers those expenses for you. There are some exceptions to the gift law. You can accept campaign contributions, you can get a service plaque, such as we've given out tonight, a trinket or an item costing $5 or less, food or beverage at a reception or a meeting where the local official is giving a speech or answering questions, which I think for most of you, if you're at a meeting, you're answering questions. So generally, you're not going to get in trouble for having some food or beverage at most of the meetings you attend. It does not apply to gifts between family members. So that's the gift law. Next, we want to talk about the open meeting law, and this is actually guided by Minnesota Statute 13D .01. All of your council meetings are open to the public, and there are inside-the-room meetings and outside-the-room meetings. And I know Mr. Beatty hadn't really heard the expression outside-the-room meetings, but for me, that's anything where we have a quorum and we're not in here. So that's how I define that. Basically, it's, an outside-the-room meeting is, refers to gatherings of three or more council members, and we'll get into that a little bit more here. Inside the meeting rooms are typically here at our council chambers, and we are required to give notice of the date and time, the location, and we do publish our agenda. If there's a public hearing, we're also required to publish that in our local newspaper, and for zoning matters, we actually notify property owners within 500 feet. They're mailed a letter to that effect. If it's a special meeting, we can have those with three-day notice, it's required, we have to post it, and meetings can be called by either the mayor or two council members, or the mayor and a council member. So that's kind of how that works. Outside-the-room meetings. These, as I mentioned, are not defined in the open meeting law. They're defined in case law, and it refers to you having a quorum of the body, if you discuss, decide, or receive information as a group, and if the information is related to official city business. So there is a couple of situations where we can close the meeting, and those pertain to real estate considerations, personnel issues, and lawsuits. Anything you want to add there?
Well, there are situations where you may close the meeting, and there are a few situations in which you must close the meeting. Those come up less frequently. The one that probably comes up more frequently than any other is if you're conducting, well, if you are considering charges or allegations against somebody that you supervise, which in a Plan B city would be the city manager. The other thing about special meetings is, as the manager said, takes a three-day notice. You cannot add items to the agenda within that three-day period, unlike what you can do with regular meetings. The right to attend a meeting is not the same as the right to speak at a meeting. You don't have the right to speak at a meeting unless there's a specific item, such as a public hearing, or whether, or if the council allows that.
Okay. And then continuing to, one of the things about the open meeting law, this actually does pertain to emails, and this is where I would really caution our new members who are just getting used to the emails and how that all works. Too many members involved in emails can constitute a quorum if the message is received by the group, and the message contains information related to official business where it goes to more than one other council member. So that's considered a serial meeting, that's an example of a serial meeting in communications. It's not necessarily a violation of the open meeting law, but if it is the intent to form a consensus outside of a meeting room, it is best to avoid those kinds of communications because that is a violation of the open meeting law. So we will also talk about email protocol a little bit here on another slide. So we talked about that. A meeting is a quorum of the body where you discuss, decide, and receive information as a group, and information is related to official business. Lessons learned about the open meeting law. Emails should be used as follows. To receive information from the city, it's a one-way communication. Typically, that is me communicating to you as a group, or between two members of the council only, without forwarding or copying other members of the council, or replying all. That is another situation. So generally, if you want to communicate with the group, it's best to do it through me, because I can communicate to all of you, and we won't be violating the open meeting law. Any more to add to that?
Well, just interestingly, in most situations, the last statement is correct between any two members of the council, but it really has to do with a quorum. For example, we just had a situation here where the council constituted three people. In that case, two is a quorum. So that's an unusual circumstance. In most cases, when you have a five-person council, that's an accurate statement.
That's a good point. So just to kind of finalize this one, there are actually penalties involved if you do this, violate the open meeting law. And currently, it's about $300 for each occurrence, and there can be attorney's fees, and those can get rather expensive. You can be removed from office for three or more violations, and by the way, the city would not be able to pay your fines or fees.
Right.
So we'll move on to data practices. This is statute, Chapter 13, and the general rule is that all data is public unless it fits under an exception. So if you don't want the public to read it, don't put it in an email. That would be, you don't want everyone to read it. Data is all data collected, created, received, maintained, or disseminated by the city regardless of its physical form, storage media, or conditions of use. Examples include documents, audio tapes, videos, CDs, emails, computer hard drive, text messages, Twitter accounts, cellphone records, and I think we could probably add Facebook and YouTube videos and all kinds of other things on there.
And the important thing to remember is that if it relates to city business, it is government data no matter where it is stored. So even if it's on your personal cellphone or your personal devices, if it relates to city business, it is government data, and if there's a data practices request, then those devices will have to be examined. So don't use them.
Good advice. So, data practices says that all cities are required to have a responsible authority and a compliance officer to administer the act. When someone asks you for data, please refer all people to the responsible authority, which in this case is our city clerk. Do not provide the data yourself. That is not a good idea. We need to help you, we know about what we can redact. There are laws that are very clear on that, and it actually will protect you, so please pass that on to us if you get a request. Some other things to consider, property complaint data is protected, non-public data. So when you get a complaint from a residence, many times they'll ask that they not be identified, but it is, it's not private, or it's not public data, so you can let them know that. Personnel data, most personnel data is non-public data and is only available to those who need to have access to it, and law enforcement data is very factually dependent based on the information contained in police reports. So Ron, anything to add to that?
Well, one of the forms of data that you're probably going to run up against is communications between individuals and you as elected officials. That is not public information, but either side, either the sender or the recipient can make it public. So you can make it public, or the individual can make it public. It's an individual, it's not an organization, it's not somebody representing an organization, it's an individual that has that protection. If you then turn that information over to a staff person here at City Hall to deal with it, that's making it public. And that's not to say that's not an appropriate thing to do, as some of the comments are. I think that's actually the best way to deal with most of these things, but that is your waiving that privilege and making that information public.
Thank you. So next, we have public hearings. So what kinds of matters require public hearings? They mostly pertain to planning applications, and in most cases with planning applications, the Planning Commission holds that public hearing. But we do have public hearings on a public improvement project, such as tonight, we're doing a street improvement project for adopting assessments and for liquor licenses. So there are lots of opportunities for the council to have public hearings. Why is a public hearing important? It allows for due process, we give notice, it allows us to hear testimony from residents or affected parties, and it maintains a record for the city council on what you heard that helped you deliberate to make your decision on whatever was before you. Why are public hearings or due process important? It started at the 14th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. It's in Article 1, Section 7 of the Minnesota Constitution, and as I said earlier, it gives people an opportunity to present their case when a property interest is at stake. Some lessons learned. Good advice for you is, don't make up your mind prior to the public hearing as to how you're going to vote. You are required to try to be open and listen to the evidence presented at a public hearing. You cannot advocate for or against a matter for which there is still to be a public hearing, and you must remain an impartial decision maker. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Beatty to talk a little bit about the difference between legislative and quasi-judicial decisions that you are asked to make.
Yes, that comes up in the context, particularly of land use decisions, when you are considering adopting an ordinance, which would be a zoning, either a text change or a rezoning, or the comp plan, those are legislative decisions in which the council has its greatest degree of discretion. Non-legislative or quasi-judicial decisions also come up in that context, but those are going to be variances, conditional use permits, subdivisions, and you have a smaller degree of discretion with regard to those. But in both contexts, the point is to be, is, the reason we keep meetings open is that so people can understand the basis for councils making decisions, so that the evidence can be presented, people can understand what goes into your decision-making, and that's true whether it's a legislative or a non-legislative decision.
Thank you, Ron. Our next item has to do with social media, and this is some things that are probably changing faster than this presentation, but we'll talk about that. One of the dangers of Facebook, which is a very popular social medium, is the open meeting law violation. So if you're Facebook friends with each other on Facebook Friends, you could be doing an open meeting law violation if you're friends with more than one council member. Data Practices Act, you could get into trouble with putting information out there that is, has not been sanctioned by the council or adopted by the council, public hearing violations, promises or admissions made in a public forum, which, once again, you can't legislate by yourself, so that could be a real problem for you. You are violating the open meeting law on Facebook if you are friends, I just said this with a quorum of city council members, and if three of you discuss, post, or opine about official business that has come or may come before the council for a decision. Social media, what if I just want to agree with something that someone posts on Facebook? Answer is, any response may violate the open meeting law because you do not know how many other council members are reading the post. One response is probably okay, two responses is likely a violation. So, social media. Reasons not to be the first to announce public information or information to the public is that you might be wrong or not quite exactly right in what you're communicating. If a matter is pending, you cannot speak on behalf of the council. For example, don't say, "Don't worry, your application is a slam dunk." One member does not have the power. Together, you have all the power. So just remember that. Together, you have all the power. More reasons not to be the first to announce information to the public. Plans change, and we know that happens. It might not be public yet, and the announcement might be harmful to our negotiations, and that is something that we try very, to be very careful about. I don't know, Ron, do you have any comments on anything that's pretty clear, straightforward? One other thing, or a couple other things to consider, everything you post on Facebook is subject to Data Practices Act, open meeting law violations, admissions of mistakes by city or staff, promises to fix situations, advocating for and against a pending application. Just remember, everything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. So there you go, that's social media. The next one is difficult constituents, and some of the things that we, and those who have been on the council a while know that they, we get a lot of concerns from residents, and they typically relate to animals, noise, odors, or snow plowing, or clog drains, but noise is a big one. Problem properties, we have vacant buildings, weeds, trash, excess vehicles, junk, these are all kind of the things that we get, the most kinds of complaints. And one of the things that I would say about council involvement is, I know that you all want to be responsive to our residents, and it's really important that you do that, but I would also include, also just either loop me in is the best thing, and then I can assign it to the best staff person. But in some situations, it's very clear, and you have a relationship with certain department directors, such as Mr. Love right now. He's a very popular department head right now. So, but generally speaking, it's better if you forward the problem or concern to us, and we can try to solve it for you. You can actually be the person that responds back to them. We don't care, but we want to make sure that they're getting the right information, and they're getting it from the people who really, that's their job to do. The other thing we have, where we have some difficult discussions, has to do with taxes. And although we don't hear a lot about this when we adopt our budget, we know that residents are concerned about taxes. They're concerned about street improvements and those assessments. And public facilities, when we do public facilities, which we don't do very often, but those are kind of three situations where people do get concerned and want to be involved and engaged in. How do we address the public concerns? First of all, is it a public or a private problem? And if it's a private problem, not a city problem, then we go to Slide number two. So we, first of all, private property items, issues we do not get involved in, like someone's tree branches overhanging the neighbor's yard, or a fence is on the wrong property line. We don't determine property lines, we don't get involved in personal property disputes. But when we do have something that is a public concern, we talk about that. Let me get my slide here. First, we identify the problem by department, whether it's public safety, public works, community development, finance, and park and recreation. You can refer them to the appropriate department, but when you do talk to a different department head or manager about an issue or concern, it's always required or appropriate to copy me, so that I know what's going on, I can make sure that things are resolved. General rules, city manager is the default depository for all complaints. Yes. Do not try to solve the problem yourself. There are two sides to every story, sometimes more, and sometimes people are just nosy, and they really don't need to know. So council involvement can lead to misunderstanding whereby residents will think that the council person involved is going to take care of it, or will be able to bypass the required legal or other type of process. So that's why staff is looped in. Ron, anything to add to that?
You know, sometimes it's not easy to determine whether it's a public or a private issue. It takes a little bit of examination. And of course, often, people try to loop the city into what's really a private dispute, and we have to be careful about that, recognizing their issues and seeing if there is an issue, but being vigilant about not inserting ourselves in a private dispute.
So that ends our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, you have this material that you can hang on to and refer to if you want, but you can also always call me or Ron if you have a question about any of these things.
Yeah, but my final comment was, obviously, this is a real quick and dirty sort of view of a subject that's, or lots of subjects, got lots of issues here, and so we're just trying to give you a general flavor of this. And so, we're just trying to give you a general flavor of this. The proper thing to do is call if you have a question. It's far better to ask in advance. Either the manager or I are happy to answer. And since there are two of us, if you don't like her answer, you can try me, or vice versa.
Thank you. That was a very good presentation. I think it's good as a reminder for the experienced council members, and for our new council members, this might be new information. It is new. But I also think that it's very good for our residents to see, these are the rules that we live by here, serving on the council. Councilmember Juneman had something to say.
Being the oldie, I have to say, those rules are really important, because I've lived through eras when they weren't necessarily adhered to. And you are going to get someone who tries to get you to solve their problem. It's just like, people think we have power, thus that sentence alone, you have none. Isn't that the truth? I've always looked at this as, I'm the channel. So, if somebody doesn't know whom to call on the staff, fine, they can call me, and I'll send them on to whoever it needs to be. But personally, I don't want to try and solve all those problems. I think it's a danger zone, and plus, I don't know how to do most of that stuff, so how would I solve it? My favorite, however, was the person who didn't like the color of the fence the people put up next door for their dog. I'm like, seriously?
Yeah.
So, I just said, I'm sorry, I can't help you with that, but I'm pretty sure city staff can't either.
Thank you.
Color preference is not something within our jurisdiction.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the one place where I sometimes get a little confused on open meeting laws are in, like, social situations, right? If I'm invited to a party, and it's, and then all of a sudden, I walk in, and there's two other council members there. Any guidance on sort of how to think through that sort of thing?
Ron might have a better answer, but my quick answer is, don't talk city business, and you should be okay.
Or you can turn around and run if you want.
Well, right, yeah. And that's been my approach. I just want to make sure that I'm still agreeing.
No, that's a good question. Chance encounters are not considered meetings. Purely social events are not considered meetings. But as the manager said, the key is when you talk business. And part of the problem with even those kind of contexts is, when people get together, what do they do? They talk about what they have in common. And so, you know, even if you run into each other in the grocery store, there's a temptation to talk about what you have in common, which is city business, and that's the issue, rather than just being in each other's presence.
And I do make an effort, even in a social environment, to not have three of us in one conversation. I'll usually politely excuse myself to another conversation until that person I was talking to is available again.
That's perfect.
I mean, I think it's just something that we're always thinking about, and I know we're all pretty good about. But I think that's where it becomes the only situation where I'm like, eek.
No, that's a really good question, and I can just say, through my observations of being at gatherings where there are more than one of you, I have noticed that you make a concerted effort to not do that. So, thank you.
And the reason I think that's important is because I think it's important to actually avoid conflicts, but also to avoid the appearance of conflicts. And I, you know, it's important that the public think that the council is abiding by the law, and even if you're, the three of you are sitting there or standing there talking about something else, it often raises that prospect in their minds. And so, I think even avoiding the appearance of conflict is important.
Mayor, Mr. Funk would like to add something.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Not to interject myself in the conversation, but probably lean on the city attorney or manager Coleman, to also just express the difference between serial conversations, because it's one thing to have a majority of council member in a discussion, and then just how the serial aspect comes into play. If you could maybe address that.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's what was mentioned earlier. That's the email chain. That's the call. A talks to B, and then A talks to C, and then A talks to D. That is not necessarily inherently a problem, except that it's almost inevitable that you're going to carry things over from one conversation to another. And that's the problem. If you can really isolate those conversations, you're better at this than I am, because people just don't do that. And so, that's the problem. When you talk one-on-one, when, and when there's an intent to, let's figure out what we're going to do in advance, so that we go to the meeting, we know what's going on. That's clearly a violation of the open meeting law, and the way to avoid that is don't talk to more than one other person.
And I found too-
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I found too that even if you do find yourself talking to two people, the bright line for me is, don't mention what the other person said. And that is a big one.
It's just hard to do, I think, as far as it goes.
For sure.
It don't matter.
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. I do have to say, though, that if you're in a social setting, and there's three of us, or even four of us, if you want to assume the worst, go right ahead. I'm sorry, but when I'm in a social setting with these people, I might want to get to know them a little better as people. So, I might ask about their families, you know, or if I know they were on a vacation, where was it and how was it? Because we work together better if we know each other a little bit. And as much as I'm dedicated to this job, truly, it's not all I think about, even when I'm with these people.
Good point.
That's good.
That's true.
All right. Those are all good points. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. That was very helpful. Okay, council, we are now moving on to the consent agenda. And it's a very short one. Thank you for noting that. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda items G1 through 3.
Second.
Motion by Juneman, seconded by Smith, to move consent agenda items G1 through 3. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
That tells you how boring the consent agenda was.
Okay, we are moving on to the public hearing portion of our meeting concerning the Maeland Crestview Forest Drive Area Pavement Rehabilitation City Project. I'm going to explain to everyone what's going to happen during this part of the meeting, and then I will be turning it over to Mr. Love, and I think probably Mr. Jerish too, who is going to be talking about it. But for your perspective, this is the public hearing part of the meeting. Staff is going to give everyone, the council, a report on this particular project, and the council will have an opportunity to ask staff any questions that we have. And then I am going to, when we conclude those questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you intend on speaking at the public hearing, you need to sign in at the back of the room, and then City Clerk Sint will bring that up here. And then, when I gavel the opening of the open, excuse me, the public hearing, then I'll go through the list, and each one of you will have an opportunity to come up and present to the council. You'll have three minutes to present your thoughts on this particular project. We do not respond, this is, the three minutes is your time to tell us what you want us to know. When we are all done with the public hearing portion of it, I will gavel the close of the public hearing, and I have to gavel it three times. And I'll ask if there's anyone else that wants to speak, anyone else that wants to speak. And I'm doing that on purpose, so that we can formalize this for the record. And at that point, then, we'll turn it back to staff, and if there were questions that came up, staff takes very good notes, and staff will answer questions at that time, so that we can make sure that we hear all of the information. And then, the council will discuss the project, and we will consider the action that's being proposed. So, that's kind of a thumbnail on what we're going to be doing for the public hearing. So, first, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Love, our Public Works Director, and Assistant City Engineer John Jerish, for the presentation of the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, as you mentioned, we have John Drosh here, our Assistant City Engineer. He's also our Lead Project Engineer for this project. And in the audience, we have our Staff Engineer Tyler Strong. I do want to mention that Tyler will be able to be available out in the atrium area after this item is finished, in case there are additional questions or follow-up items that anybody wants to speak to. So, with that, I will turn it over to John.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mayor and council. If I can get the presentation up. Thank you. So, this is the Maeland, one more time. This is the Maeland Crestview Forest Area Street Improvement Project, City Project 18-27. We're here tonight for the public hearing and consideration of ordering the improvements. The streets you see highlighted on the right-hand side of your screen are the streets included with this project. They're generally bounded by McKnight Road on the west, London Lane on the north, Century Avenue on the east, and Hillwood Drive on the south. This project was established in the approved 2019 to 2023 capital improvement plan, and it is a key component in meeting the city's infrastructure and asset management strategic priority. Now, this strategic priority aims to provide safe, efficient, sustainable, cost-effective, and well-maintained roads and transportation systems in the city. The streets in the project area total 2.1 miles in length and have an average pavement condition index rating of 36 out of 100 on a scale from 1 to 100. The majority of the concrete curb and gutter in the project area is in good condition. The utilities in the area are generally in good condition as well. We do, however, have some localized drainage concerns, particularly on Oday Street, where we have year-round sump pump discharge that is causing some ponding of water in the streets, as well as icing in the winter. Staff has reached out to the residents in the project area in a number of ways. We sent out an informational packet back in October of 2018. We've held two neighborhood meetings to date, one of those in November of last year, and then the latest in January of this year. We've also had numerous phone call conversations, emails, and one-on-one meetings. Looking forward, we're looking to host additional neighborhood meetings as the project progresses, as well as sending out additional letters and flyers to keep the neighborhood informed. The improvements proposed with this project include the full-depth reclamation or grinding up of the existing street pavement, mixing that with the aggregate base underneath the road to create a new solid road base. On top of that, we're looking at installing two new layers of asphalt pavement, along with the spot replacement of deteriorated concrete curb and gutter. We're also looking at the replacement of driveway openings that contain what's known as Type S curbing, which is a really steep and abrupt curbing. We're looking at replacing those driveway openings with a more gradual, flatter slope to make transitioning in and out of the driveways easier for those residents. We're looking at extensive drain tile and catch basin installations on Oday Street to relieve some of those drainage issues we're seeing in the area. And we're also looking at minor utility manhole lid adjustments. In total, the project is estimated to cost just over $1.6 million. The funding for this project is proposed to come from the combination of sources, including the Street Revitalization Fund, which is financed through those gas and electric franchise fees, benefit, assessments to the benefiting properties, the Sanitary Sewer Fund, the Environmental Utility Fund, as well as the WAC Fund. As I talked about on that previous slide, the special assessments are just one of the funding sources utilized to finance these public improvement projects. Each year, the city council sets a maximum rate for the assessments based on the type of the project. And then, during the project development phase of the project, an independent appraisal firm is hired to determine what that benefit is that is received by the properties in the area. And per Minnesota State Statute 429, that assessment amount cannot be greater than the benefit to the properties. We have tentatively set that assessment hearing date for May of this year, and prior to that assessment hearing, residents within the project area will be mailed an official statement of their assessment. That statement will include the assessment amount, what options are available for paying that assessment, what options are available for deferring it, as well as their right to object. And prior to that assessment hearing, staff will be hosting an additional neighborhood meeting specifically to discuss those assessments. So, we're here tonight for the public hearing. Council should accept public input on the proposed improvements, and then following that public input, the council will vote on the project. Just to note that a supermajority vote, or a minimum of four votes, is required to move the project forward tonight. If we do move forward, design will continue with a bid opening proposed in April. And moving forward, we're proposing that assessment hearing, like I said before, to be held in May, as well as the award of contract. And the assessment hearing would be the meeting at which the council would accept public input on the proposed assessments. At the end of that meeting, the council would vote on the project and ultimately determine whether or not to send the project into construction. And at the end of that meeting, it is just a simple majority vote that would be required at that point to move it forward. If approved, construction will begin in late June of the year and would be finished by November of 2019. And with that, staff is recommending that the council hold the public hearing tonight, and then consider approval of the attached resolution ordering the improvements for the Maeland Crestview Forest Area Street Improvements, City Project 18-27. And staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Very good report. Council, do you have any questions of Mr. Jerish or Mr. Love? Okay. City Clerk Sint. No one signed up? Okay, then. I still, Mr. Beatty, I take it I still need to have it? Okay. Just to make sure, I just want to make sure. Okay, with that, then I am going to open up the public hearing concerning the resolution ordering the improvement of the Maeland Crestview Forest Area Street Improvements, City Project 18-27. Is there anyone who would like to come to the podium and make any kind of comments? You'll have three minutes. Would you like to come to the podium, please? Do you state your, um, thank you.
2587 Pond Avenue East.
Could you please say that again?
Maplewood, Minnesota. Kathy Tolleson, 2587 Pond Avenue East, Maplewood. My concern is, I just would like to have, to know how much notice we would have before the assessment meeting in May, because I would like to be there, but I travel a lot, so.
Okay, thank you. You know, we will find that answer out for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the public hearing? Would you please state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Phil DeCaro. My address is 2581 Pond Avenue East. And I just want to emphasize, I think this project is really long overdue. And the streets, particularly on Oday Street, are terrible. If, I'm just kind of reinforcing what you probably already know, but I just wanted to make my feelings known, that I think it's long overdue, and I can't wait for it to be done, so.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public hearing? Ms. Sint, I have a question. Do we need their names on your signup sheet and their addresses?
We just have to record it.
Okay. Did you get their names, so that, okay?
Okay.
Just to make sure that we have your names and your addresses for the record, that would
be really helpful. Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to present for the public hearing? That's one. Number two, is there anyone else who would like to say anything for the public hearing? Number three, is there anyone else who would like to present for the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and-
They're thinking, get on with it already.
We're going to follow the rules. Okay. So, at this point, before we go to the council questions, there, Mr. Jerish or Mr. Love, could you respond to the questions about the notice before the assessment?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So, the timeframe for, lead time for notification for the assessment hearing is established by state statute. So, we're required to give mailed and published notice 10 days in advance at a minimum for that. And we also will have that additional neighborhood meeting prior to that, as well, we're always available for questions on assessments.
Okay. And again, if you have any questions at the end of the public hearing, you can talk with Tyler. He will be standing outside and be available for any comments, okay? So, with that, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I turned my microphone on this time. I wanted to thank both Ms. Tolleson and Mr. DeCaro for speaking. It's always nice to hear people who are positive about projects we're trying to do. That's not always what we get to hear here, so it's great. And Mr. DeCaro, I just want to mention, yeah, it is definitely overdue. Uh, and Mr. DeCaro, I just want to mention, yeah, it's, it is definitely overdue, and, you know, all of us wish we could fix every road as fast as we can, but with, with resources, we got to work through the list, so, uh, but I appreciate it, and, uh, you know, we're looking forward to having it done as well. Um, and I think, I just wanted to comment on Ms. Tolleson's, uh, comment too, that, you know, I think one of the things as a, as an overall team here at the city we're trying to get better at is how do we do a better job of communicating with residents above and beyond what state statute requires us to do, but how do we, um, push it even further to get better at it? So I think it's, uh, always a good reminder how important that is to folks, uh, and, and as a goal that we've set for ourselves to keep pushing towards that. So it's, uh, that, that said, another good backstop is to keep an eye on our upcoming council calendar. Um, that will probably be out further than 10 days. So if, if you may have other things in your life besides coming to council meetings that you have to plan around, that might be another way to kind of get a little bit more of a future look. But thank you for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Juneman.
I just want to point out to the public that this, again, is a project that was moved forward because of our gas franchise fee, and that 47% of this is going to be covered by that. And it's helpful in the part of the city where we're dealing with now, where you were all gifted with that lovely asphalt from Mendat. The gift that has kept on giving for many years now. Um, so, yes, what he said, we've wanted to do it for some time, but we're lucky with what we've chosen to do with the help of our Finance Director and some good brainstorming is bringing these things forward sooner than we might have been able to. So, um, I would say that by November, you'll be very happy campers. That was my experience, anyway.
Public Works Director Love.
Yeah, just a quick clarification. We double-checked those dates. It was actually 10 days advance notice for the public hearing. For the assessment hearing, it's actually 14 days advance notice.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful. You know, from my perspective, this is a clear example of how the gas franchise fee is working, uh, in that the project that's going to be, uh, hopefully, it sounds like we're going to probably pass this tonight in just a few minutes, uh, is, is really spread out and being paid for by the rest of the community, which I think is really a wonderful way that that gas franchise fee works. So with that, uh, any other questions or comments from the council? Then, in that regard, do I have a motion to approve the attached resolution ordering the improvement for the Maeland Crestview Forest Drive Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project?
I move appro-
Oh.
I move to approve the attached resolution ordering the improvement for the Maeland Crestview Forest Drive Area Pavement Rehabilitation, City Project 18-27.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman. The resolution ordering the improvement for the Maeland Crestview Forest Drive Area Pavement Rehabilitation, City Project 18-27. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and you're going to have your road fixed by the fall. And, uh, if you have any other questions, Tyler will be outside.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, moving on. We have one other item on the agenda under unfinished business, uh, concerning plans and specifications and advertising for bids for Gladstone Phase III Corridor Improvements. And with that, again, we have Mr. Love and Mr. Jerish.
Evening, Mayor and Council, again. I have a presentation here for the Gladstone Phase III Improvement Project with our two new council members. I thought it'd be a really good chance to revisit the history on this project, as there's a, there's a pretty good story here to be told. So, as we look at this project, um, it is Phase III, so there's been three other phases. Um, as you can see here, there's also, uh, Wakefield Park is highlighted as well on this map, and, uh, that, that'll come into play here as we talk about water quality improvements. So, as I mentioned, there were three phases. The first, uh, phase was completed in 2012, and this was the green area that runs from Highway 61 up to East Shore Drive. And then in 2015, we completed the purple area, which goes from East Shore Drive out to English Street. So now we're looking at our final, um, phase of this project, so it seems like we've been working on Frost Avenue for quite some time, but this is a chance for us to finish off Frost Avenue, uh, with the reconstruction, uh, running from English Street to White Bear Avenue, as, along with addressing water quality improvements for Wakefield Lake. So taking a look at what's out there today, this is in a cross-section of what you're, what the Frost Avenue looks like. It's roughly 52 feet wide from, uh, gutter to gutter. That's very wide considering it's one lane in each direction, so it's a, it's a sea of asphalt. It's like a landing strip out there. One of the things, uh, that is missing in this area is pedestrian improvements. So this map shows all of the existing pedestrian and bicycle improvements, uh, in the area. The purple dash lines, um, represent, you know, the last part of Frost Avenue that isn't connected. This also shows that there isn't a really a direct connection to Wakefield Park as well. One of the things that council has been approached, uh, on several times is the water quality of, uh, Wakefield Lake. It is an impaired water body by the MPCA, uh, for nutrients, and that would primarily be phosphorus. Right now, um, the MPCA has, uh, required us to do a 67% reduction of phosphorus loading, uh, for Wakefield Lake, and so the watershed district is the one who's kind of leading that effort. So as we looked, um, to all these things that we were hearing from pedestrian improvements, uh, safety, uh, the road itself, you know, we started looking at, you know, is there, is there, you know, is there an opportunity to partner and kind of look at this more as a regional, uh, fix? So just touching really quick on our strategic plan, uh, this is in the 2019-2023 Capital Improvement Plan. It does speak to a number of, uh, strategic priorities, uh, primarily infrastructure and asset management. As we look at there, out there, the, the road is in very rough shape, but we also are going to be looking at things such as water main replacement and, uh, sanitary sewer repairs. Also, uh, financial stability. So we really looked at opportunities here to lever partnerships and, uh, grant opportunities to help kind of fund this project. So, taking a look at what we, we are proposing to do out there, we're proposing to reconstruct Frost Avenue. We're proposing to really kind of narrow this roadway down. As you saw, 52 feet wide is, is very wide for a road out there. So we're looking at reducing that down to 26 feet wide. Uh, this will be, uh, very similar to what you see on English Street and Hazelwood. We're proposing to add, uh, pedestrian and bicycle facilities along this road, uh, eight-foot wide trail on the south side, and a five-foot, uh, sidewalk on the north side. I mentioned, uh, utilities upgrades such as, uh, replacing the cast iron water main, which is really subject to breaks, with, uh, ductile iron water main. And also really looking to improve that water quality for Wakefield Lake by reducing the impervious area. Uh, we're also proposing improvements within the park itself, as well as, uh, an opportunity to provide education on stormwater. So, speaking of, when we looked at this and we were like, looked at, you know, who could we partner with this, uh, the watershed district, uh, obviously came to mind. So we are partnering with Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District. Uh, we are also, uh, joined by the City Consultants of Kidlui Horn and, uh, watershed districts, uh, consultants by, uh, Bar Engineering. And I know that representatives of, of our group have been before you in the past, so this has really been a really great collaborative, uh, project, uh, between us. So what, taking a look at what is this going to really look like? So here's an example of, um, of what the proposed conditions would be. 26-foot wide road, you'll see a bowl, a grass boulevards, you'll see a, a Batuminous Trail that would be on the south side of Frost and Concrete Walk on the north side. I do want to point out, uh, there are no boulevard trees being proposed at this time. We're not removing boulevard trees. We've worked very hard to install boulevard trees, but what we ran into out there is, after, we're shrinking the road so much that we have other utilities that are right under where we would want to plant them, such as our clay, uh, sanitary sewer lines. So, to kind of keep this in perspective, most of this whole cross-section here from the walk to the edge of the trail actually lies within the original roadway of Frost Avenue. So unlike a lot of projects where you're talking about expanding to put trails in, we're actually reducing to put the trails in. So this is a very positive, uh, project here. Uh, we're proposing, uh, parking bays in select areas. There's a number of blocks that are only two homes long with driveways off of the side streets, and in a couple of key areas, we are proposing parking bays. So I tried to provide you a visualization of what this might look like. Uh, this, this was done by me, so this isn't anything fancy, but as you can see here, there's two pictures of the same, uh, section of Frost Avenue, and you can see on the south there, we have a grass boulevard with the Batuminous Trail and a concrete sidewalk on the north side. So you can really see, this is really going to be a transformation of the neighborhood. It's really going to, uh, narrow things up, and this is going to help a lot with, uh, speeding. If you've tried to drive down Frost, uh, and go 30 miles an hour, it's very difficult because it's so wide. Um, the other thing this helps with is pedestrian safety, so where we have crossing of the, uh, Frost Avenue, before, uh, pedestrian would have to cross 52 feet wide of asphalt. Uh, if somebody did slow down, there was more than enough room for somebody behind that car to go around them. So we've had another, a bunch of complaints, so, uh, this is another way to, uh, deal with that, as well as, uh, water quality. So as you can see between these two photos, there's a big difference in, in the amount of, uh, hard area that's going to, uh, cause runoff. And in these boulevards, they're going to be a little bit la- larger than our normal three-foot wide boulevards. They're going to be anywhere from five to eight feet wide, and we're actually going to put a shallow depression, very shallow, but that'll capture that first flush to provide extra water quality improvements. So, uh, I mentioned the watershed district. They are a very big partner on this project, and when we look at, um, our watershed district, uh, we've got a, a couple, we've got our, a couple of lining goals. So we look at the watershed district's, um, management plan, as well as our, uh, park and recreation master plan and our principal guiding, uh, goals. You'll see a lot of things really line up, and that's one of the really great things that we have with the watershed district, is, uh, we're really, uh, looking to achieve a lot of the same things. So, uh, taking a look at what are we trying to achieve out there? Uh, so the, the MPCA set, uh, set a TMDL, which is a total maximum daily load for the phosphorus. The total load reduction was required was 51.8 pounds of phosphorus. There have been a num- another, uh, a number of, um, projects that we've partnered with, uh, including two spent lime, uh, treatment systems in the area. You might remember that, uh, being installed last year, as well as we've implemented volume reduction rules, and, uh, we had residential rain garden retrofit projects. So all those projects together total about 20.3 pounds of phosphorus, uh, per year, so that's about 39.2% of our overall TMDL. Kind of show you the area that is, um, actually draining through the north end of our lake here. As you can see, this is the whole watershed area. The yellow area is actually what's coming in to Wakefield Lake from the north side. It does take a very long route, uh, through Golf Course, through our City Hall Pond, across, uh, White Bear, all the way down. So this is why this is such a great opportunity to try to make a difference here. So, uh, the watershed district originally had planned, uh, they kind of targeted this area, uh, for a project with Wakefield Park with the hope to get 18% phosphorus reduction, so 18% of that goal. So our project is actually estimated to remove about 23.8 pounds, or approximately 46% of the overall total phosphorus reduction requirement. So when we complete this project, it's estimated that we'll have completed about, we'll have achieved 85.1% of our target load. So this is a really great opportunity, and that's also why the watershed district is being a very big partner on this project. So to kind of give you an idea of what we're doing in Wakefield, uh, Park, uh, this is, uh, there's going to be two large, uh, rain gardens on either side. Um, the, all the green things that you see there are actually trees, so we are planting a bunch of trees as part of this project. Um, it's a, it's a really, really attractive, um, landscaping design. We're proposing to put sidewalk down from Frost Avenue, uh, down to our new nature center, so there'll be a connection there, as well as we have a couple fun crossings over into the green space that these, uh, rain gardens kind of frame. So the open space is going to be lawn, which is what, per our park master plan, but we have some stepping stones that go through, uh, this, uh, rain garden, as well as a, a bridge to provide people, uh, easier access to that area. So it's going to really help, kind of really frame that north end of that park there. And as well as there, there's going to be, uh, opportunities for environmental stewardship and education, so we're exploring ideas, uh, with the watershed district, how, how to provide education in the park about what this whole system is doing. So when we look at project funding, this is about, uh, 5.25 million. Um, what, the Ramsey-Washington Metro Watershed District, uh, they are coming to the table with, uh, a little over a million-dollar grant. Uh, they, they actually were a partner with us on a grant application that we didn't get, and they felt this was such an important project, they decided to fund the grant entirely themselves. We also were, uh, successful in getting another grant from Mendat for a million dollars. So when we look at that, that's 39% of the project being funded through, uh, grants, which is really great. Um, another, uh, chunk of the budget there is, uh, City of St. Paul, uh, they're replacing the water main, so you see about 897,000, or about 17% of the project, and that is being paid for by, uh, St. Paul Regional Water Services. So, um, I have my numbers here still with me. When it's all said and done, uh, the city will be responsible for about, um, 54% of the overall project. Um, you'll notice assessments aren't part of this project with the grant funding. Um, we were able to eliminate, uh, assessments, and then one of the main reasons is this is also an area that the city has spent a lot of money and time for targeted redevelopment on the west end. So rather than saddling all these properties, we want to see, uh, redevelop with a, an assessment, uh, fortunately, we're able to, uh, cover the remaining costs. And just a little bit of background on what we've done, uh, so far, we've had three, uh, open house meetings, uh, with residents, so there were two, uh, meetings early on to gather input, provide feedback to them, gather more input. We, uh, completed another meeting in February, which was a plan review meeting. We've gone to the ENRC, as well as a park commission with the proposed plans, and received support from both those bodies. So tonight, um, we're looking at, um, for the council to consider approving plans to authorize ad for bid. As there are no assessments, uh, we are not required to follow the 429 process, but, uh, we do, uh, we have told all the residents that there'd be an opportunity to address council tonight if, uh, if anybody chose to do so. If we do move forward, we'd be looking at awarding bids in April and construction throughout, uh, spring through the fall. And with that, staff recommends that council take any public input, and, uh, also consider approval of plans and specifications and advertising for bids for the Gladstone Phase III Corridor Improvements, City Project 16-18, and we are available for any questions.
Great report, and I think this is an example of what public entities can do together when they partner. I mean, this is really an inspirational project. Uh, Councilmember Juneman, you were first.
Wow.
Yes.
As someone who was sitting here in 2003 when we started dreaming about all this and wondering many times will we ever get there, this is fantastic. And I, you know, the people who have waited for so long about the water quality in, in the lake should be very, 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 very happy at this point. And to give you a little perspective, while I am older than dirt, um, in the 60s, we could swim in that lake, actually. There was a beach, and the people that lived along there would swim, and look what it's like now. You wouldn't throw anyone except someone you hated in that waterhead first. And so it's really, this is remarkable, and how beautiful it's going to look. It's just fantastic. And I, I, I hope the people along there do appreciate that, you know, you've partnered with people, they are not being assessed, and they're going to have this great improvement going by their house, um, you know? Um, and the fact that we can do the walkways and everything within the existing roadway, so they're not going to even feel like their yards are being taken for sidewalk. I mean, it's just, you couldn't do any better. This is such a win-win. And again, as the mayor said, I, our partnerships lately with the watershed district have been phenomenal, which says a lot of things about a lot of people, but it says a lot of things about us as a city and our staff, that they like working with us, and they know we have high environmental, environmental goals, or they would not be looking at us like this. So kudos to the staff. This is wonderful. Hallelujah.
Thank you. Councilmember Knutson?
I just want to speak on behalf and support of this project. I have been involved in watershed projects for quite a number of years, sometimes unwittingly. Um, I first became aware of the Washington County, um, Ramsey-Washington Watershed when I was at a presentation when I first developed St. John's Hospital, and they were showing how to do riprap without... to do riprap without destroying, and ours was mentioned as a way not to do it. So I called McGough the very next morning. But then I have property in Crow Wing County, and they approached us and said, "Do you realize that mowing next to the lake is the worst thing you can do because it creates phosphorus?" I got involved in a grant and planted 8,000 natural plants on our lakeshore. I recovered about 1,000 feet of lakeshore, and then did another piece on our farm. Most people don't understand the impact of water quality on things you do upstream and downstream. And so the opportunity to educate people on the value of water quality, because the value in City Maplewood for all of its lakes and properties is extreme when it comes to water quality. So I just, this is a fantastic project. And, you know, again, on purpose or unwittingly, I know a lot about watershed, and I think people forget about the fact that the watershed controls the landscape of the entire area. It's, it's where water flows and where it goes to, and it's important to cooperate. And I think this is a fantastic project.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will echo my colleague saying this is a pretty incredible project for us to be walking, again, to underline with no assessments. I, I think, I don't know, probably a first for me since we, since I've been here, that we're doing a project the second time. Okay. Since I, I don't know if that was while I was here or not, but...
Mayor, Mayor and Council, we did not assess as part of Phase Two because we were successful in a grant there, and it was a redevelopment grant. So we're kind of continuing on that same idea for this quarter.
So credit where credit is due, yeah, twice, but it's, it's pretty remarkable considering how many other projects we do that have those. A couple of questions I have, and one is around lighting. I think for the amount of beauty that we're putting into this project, I guess I'm wondering a little bit about lighting design. How are we thinking through that? Are the fancy lights going to be there with the maple leaves on them? And have we looked at sort of, maybe some solar options or anything like that? And then the other question, I know you're probably going to be able to anticipate this one, is do we have the opportunity to maybe do some more cautious pedestrian control around the trails, both Gateway and Vento? I know those are both kind of gnarly crossings, and if we might be able to do some blinky lights or something there to, to help keep folks safe.
Mayor and Council, so one of the first things that we're doing to help pedestrians is narrowing the road. That's going to be a significant improvement. There's a couple of key crossings near the park and the gateway that we're going to be looking at, the type of signage that we're going to put out there. But really, that, really, that narrowing the road is going to do two things. It's going to slow down the cars, and it's also going to prevent people from driving around. So signage will certainly be considered. We did look at options for burying the power lines and extending the fancy light system, but they were very cost prohibitive at this point. We are working with Excel on power pole relocations that interfere, affect their, sorry. Power pole locations as a, were in conflict with the trail, so they're being moved, and so we're going to be looking at the lighting in that area. As things move on in the future, if there's opportunities for solar lighting or something like that, that can always be looked at.
I just think it's, just a quick follow-up. I just think it's really critical for us to think through too, how does the light itself highlight the project? So as people are driving through in the evenings, is the light enhancing the beauty of the area? Is it not just kind of big gross sodium lighting that, that makes it ugly at night and it's beautiful in the day? I think as we can think that through in, in investment this size, I think it's really important, not to mention the safety.
Thank you. From my perspective, I want to commend you for, for working through. I know one of our residents had an issue about parking on Frost Avenue, and thank you for working through that as well and being open and communicating with residents about what, what their needs are. That was really very helpful. I appreciate being on those emails that you are working through that.
Absolutely. Mayor and, uh, Mayor and Council, is when the system's working right, that's the way it works. You know, that's why we hold these neighborhood meetings. We do want that feedback. The particular resident had some really good points, and it kind of led us to a slight design alteration that fit her needs and actually was a better, better result. So that's when the process is working the way it's supposed to, that's the way it's supposed to work.
You know, I'd like to make a suggestion that when we do our open house, when we, over at Wakefield, at our new building over at Wakefield, that we tell the story of Wakefield because it really has come about because of some pretty amazing partnerships. And I think that, I certainly think we should invite the partners that have been engaged with us in that whole area, but I think we also need something in writing. Maybe even communications could do a video on that. I know they're doing kind of progress videos on the building, but this is truly, you know, being on the council, looking at this, there have been so many amazing things that have happened for, you know, our newest council members. The, do you want to explain just briefly the grant, or the, the money that we got from the watershed district for the spent lime ponds? At one time, we learned lots and lots about spent lime ponds over there, but the watershed district stepped in, and I, was that a million dollars as well?
Mayor and Council, so it's a spent lime treatment. So spent lime is a byproduct for water, drinking water. It's, they found that you filter the water through it, and it attracts the phosphorus. They actually built and are operating that whole system themselves. Our, our aspect of that was providing the land. So we had a rain garden that water flew through, or flowed through, and so it was a great partnership. And we have, actually have two of those. They are even looking at, you know, possibilities for a third one in the watershed district, or within this drainage area. But, you know, when you talk about long-term partners, they also provided us a grant for Phase Two with the large ponding system that is in Gladstone Savannah. And they also are going to take over long-term maintenance of these two large rain gardens in Wakefield. So this is, this is a, this is a serious commitment by a very good partner, so.
And I think we need to tell that story when we finish up on Wakefield and we have that grand opening, because I think that's, this is a clear example of how public entities can work together for the benefit of residents. Any other comments by council members? I'm going to, there, we have one person sitting in our audience tonight. I don't know if you would like to speak on this. We don't have any need for a public hearing because we don't have, we're not assessing anyone, but people would be invited if they would like to speak on this project, comment on it, before we take any action.
I would like to just kind of make a beginning question. Hi, my name is Mary Yang. I would just miss the beginning of your recommendations, and I just wanted to know how much this was going to cost, and maybe your tentative start date, if you could just repeat yourselves.
Okay. Absolutely. So the overall project cost is $5,249,000. That's our engineering estimate. So we haven't gone out for bids yet, so that final price, we'll know once we, we do that. And as far as start date, it would be in the spring after the road restrictions are lifted and once a contractor has been awarded a contract. It'll, it'll be throughout the construction season and wrapping up late in fall.
And with the project, we are responsible for 54, 54% of it, and our partners are coming forward with 46% of the project. That's why we don't have to assess any of the property owners in that area, which is really quite phenomenal.
And will you also be, I know you're going to probably have a public hearing for the residents, but your council member, Smith, was talking about the lighting. Will you also have any input from the community in terms of maybe some public artwork or anything that they would like to contribute to this project?
Mayor and Council, with, with the public hearing, as we talked about, there, there's going to be no public hearing with the project because there's no assessments, but we are having public input tonight. All the residents who were, were, provided a letter explaining that we're going to be here tonight, and there was an opportunity to do so. As far as public art, I kind of just touched on it in a slide here, that the watershed district is still looking at ways to promote environmental stewardship. They have done some, I guess, public art, you would call it. The bottom left corner is a sidewalk in our Barnwell-Meyer area. They, 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 these represent raindrops in the water, and they were, the watershed provided the money for that. At the mall there, you see some work they've done, as well as some signage. So at this point, that's, that's where we are with that.
Could you please, just for a point of clarification, because I know you said that you weren't here earlier?
Yes.
Could you put up the slide about the neighborhood meetings that you did hold? So the, the neighborhood has been brought in on this?
Yes.
And continues to be brought in on it in terms of emails and the parking bays and such?
Absolutely. Mayor and Council, so we held two open house meetings, one in April, one in October of 2018. We, we hold these to gather input from residents, and then we held the second one to bring a revised idea back to them, gather more input. We went to the ENRC, as well as the Park Commission, got input from them. And then we ultimately had a third open house, which was a, a plan review, where residents could come and look at the plans and provide feedback as well. We're always available for phone calls, private one-on-one meetings, and you mentioned one of the residents that we were working with on the project as well. And, and so we've, you know, certainly will be providing more information to residents as the project moves forward. We do a lot of mailings. We provide them information on who the project inspector will be, so that they have direct line of communication with somebody in the field, as well as direct Maplewood staff members to contact as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I am looking for a-
I move approval of the resolution approving plans and specifications and advertising for bids, Gladstone Phase Three corridor improvements, city project 16-18.
Second.
Okay, that was a contest. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Motion to approve the resolution approving plans and specifications and advertising for bids for the Gladstone Phase Three corridor improvements, city project 16-18. Any further?
I just had to make that motion after being here this long. I'm like, yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Very excellent job, staff. Thank you so much.
Wow, wow, wow.
And thank you, everyone, and good night. We are adjourned.
Good night.
Cool.